Would you all please stand with me and I would like to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Okay, easy, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Sure. John Google Yelmo is not here. Tim Clark?
Here.
Audra All?
Here.
Sarah Shitsky? Chris Boucher?
Here.
Penn Trustor?
Here.
And Tara Reither?
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, the next, uh, order of business is to accept the agenda for tonight. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Sarah and Audra?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, I would like to, what, what, uh, where is that? Second. First, do you know where that is on the?
Take it down, no rush.
It would be under actual item D. Um, I would like to table the adapt, uh, D, adapt the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six budget. Uh, I'd like to have a little bit more thorough, uh, meeting with finance before we go ahead to present that. I wasn't, uh, I had no idea that was going to be presented here tonight. So.
Is that okay with the budget calendar?
Yes. We do have some time built in to make sure we have all the publication dates, um, that are supposed to be under law. We do have some time built in, this is early for us.
Okay.
Um, but it would have to be scheduleable, I would say, within the next week. Yeah. If we can do one next week quick, just for vote.
Uh, what does everybody else think?
I'm okay, but that seems fine, they probably get more together next week? Yep, I'm good enough.
Um, so. Do I need another motion to amend this?
No, I don't.
This minute, from this agenda?
Just table, we just table it, right?
Sure. I was, my thought process was, is that you could accept, well, okay, I think you can just mark to table it.
Mark a table?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, all on paper, approving the agenda with the, uh, like your vote. Section nine D table, on paper. I carry. Okay, our next section of the meeting is called recognition of successes. We're going to be recognizing the number two thousand twenty five valedictorian and salutatorian.
Yeah, uh, Tim, thank you. Uh, we had invited our valedictorian and salutatorian to be here this evening. Um, obviously, they were not people to make it, but I did want to go on record with you as a school board. Um, you know, as an academic institution, it's, uh, to all the effort we put in to get them from where they start with us to where they finish. Our senior class to honor, uh, a very unique setting in that they're both from the same, uh, home. Uh, Maharet Monroe, uh, is our, uh, valedictorian and our salutatorian is Silas Monroe. Uh, very proud of the effort that both of them have put in. Um, you know, academically, as well as being the, uh, the people they are and being involved in the things they are. We have a couple of certificates here that are, that are signed by myself, uh, and Tim, and I'll make sure that they get those. Um, they, of course, will be honored at, uh, graduation as well, but I thought since we just informed them, uh, a short time ago, and then I made a, uh, an announcement to the entire student body of who they were and asked the student body and faculty and staff to help me recognize their accomplishment, I, I wanted to present them to you this year of the evening as well. So, that's where that comes from, and, uh, I wish them both all the best, and we'll see them again with these honors, uh, at the graduation ceremony. Okay, another round of applause for.
Okay, our next section of the meeting is community comments. Um, if there are any community comments now is the time?
I do have one.
Okay.
Don't be me?
Don't be me. Sorry.
Okay, guess I'll come over here since it's, uh, a little weird hiding in the corner.
Yeah, it's great.
So, uh, on page two, me, right, I, uh, I wanted to come here and kind of express some things that have been going on, because I think it's important for the board and the community to know what's been happening. And, uh, I tried to briefly write things down, it is double sided, I'll do my best, please bear with me. So, I wanted to say, right, I felt compelled to be here to be the best advocate I could be for my girls. And when I say my girls, I don't just mean Ford Edward girls, I mean the Hartford girls that have been playing for me as well. I pass out a letter to each board member because I didn't really feel like I could fully encapsulate my feelings tonight. Um, so I hope that at some point you take your time to read it to get a better understanding of what's been happening. First, I'd like to say, um, again, I would not be here if I didn't think this would benefit both the Ford Edward and the Hartford girls program. This is my fifth year coaching, and each year, kind of crazy of me, I track every single at-bat of every single game, every season. So, if you said, hey, what did this kid have two years ago, played, played against Haile Glazern, I could give it to you. Because I, I don't know, I like to be like a science teacher and track the data to really see everybody's playing time. Um, if you're interested in that data, I can share it with you, gladly. Um, I just wanted to highlight some things, my second year coaching, I had twenty-three girls on my modified team, just me. My second year, or sorry, my third year, I had eighteen. Okay, and again, just me, and just, if anybody's unsure, really, there's only nine positions on the field, modified, I can get away, I have Rover, I can play ten. But still, I can only field ten girls, I have twenty-three and eighteen. So, those were obviously challenging seasons. At practice, I have all the girls all at once with just me, and especially at modified, I mean, half of my girls had never even touched a softball before. So, it's, you know, I'm teaching them foundational skills, how to throw a ball, how to hold a bat, how to, you know, communicate a play. Like, if I have a ball, where do I throw it to? These are things that really every girl is very needy with at modified. And I felt like I could not accomplish what I wanted to accomplish in a season, you know, trying the very best that I could with the sheer mass of numbers that I had each year. Um, the games were maybe even more crazy, because, again, it's modified, so I'm trying to get everybody playing time, and there's only ten spots. So, my lineup cards. So, my lineup cards, instead of having just one row or one column, I have two. Everybody goes down one line, and then we go down a whole nother line, and then we restart. So, we had several games in the season where girls are getting one at-bat. Right? They get up to bat, they've never played softball before, they strike out, that's it, they're done. There's no adjusting to the picture, try it again, try again next week when we have another game. Um, and then my diagrams, I used to hand draw diagrams, I mean, I still do this too. Where I have my substitutions, because every inning, there's a whole new group of girls on the field. So, maybe your daughter plays the first inning, she doesn't play the second, she plays the third. But you're sitting through the whole game, trying to see as much as you possibly can. So, obviously, this is frustrating, right? It's frustrating for me because I feel like I'm not able to do as much as I want to do in a season. It's frustrating for the girls, they feel like they're not growing as much as they should be each season. And it's frustrating, I know from parents that have spoken to me saying, you know, like, why is my daughter getting one at-bat? Grandparents even, why, you know, we're coming to watch the games every week, we're only seeing one at-bat. What am I supposed to do, right? I have seventeen other girls on the bench also wanting the same opportunity. Um, so, within, even with these struggling seasons, right? Girls still show up every year, girls still show, they assume that the next year is going to be better. Last year, what, the scenario last year was, we found out last minute that we had nine signed up from Hartford and eleven signed up for Ford Edward. So, I thought this might have been the, that last year might have been the year where we could finally say, okay, we're going to start building up our separate modified programs. The issue was that Hartford did not believe that those were strong numbers. So, we still merged, but nine plus eleven, that's twenty again. And I said, this cannot continue, we cannot continue having effective, again, for Hartford and Ford Edward girls cannot have an effective season with this many girls on the same team. So, my previous administration gave me two options. The first option was to cut girls, which I said it was never going to happen. It's never happened at Ford Edward at the modified level, I wasn't going to be the first coach to do that.
I actually had in basketball a couple times, uh, because the board at the time didn't. There isn't A V, two-team process in basketball that you can do.
Gotcha.
And they chose not to for some reason at that time. I wasn't on, but I remember the time well.
Gotcha.
It's not a good practice.
Yeah, I didn't know that, thank you.
Can I, before you go any further?
Go ahead.
Did you explore the two-team option in the years that you did have enough?
In the years that I had the twenty and eighteen girl team?
Twenty-three.
No.
The other thing I would ask you is that, have you ever considered it, in, in maybe just even for this year?
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, three, the A B C team where each kid is on two teams, you stagger, they play two, you play three games a week, they play two.
No, we did.
Or every other team, they play two or one.
We did something similar last season, but those first two years we did not.
You play a little bit less games, but there'll be less people in the games?
Right, right, we, um, we did something kind of like that last year.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so last year when we did merge, so that was actually my idea last year, which was, okay, uh, we're not going to have, because the second option was to have two teams, but they wanted one team to be the good team and the other team to be the bad team. And again, I didn't felt, feel like that was the right mentality when, when we're trying to build up our program that we're already, it's pretty much cutting girls by saying you're not on the good, as good team. So, instead, the plan that we did was, we had a Ford Edward team and we had a Hartford team, and I only swung girls as needed, and I had a different girl swing to play every time. So, for example, the Ford Edward team, they had eleven girls, I wouldn't pull any Hartford girls over. The Hartford team, eventually, as the season progressed, they ended up only having eight girls. So, I would swing a Ford Edward girl just to fill a spot, right? She'd play where a Hartford girl did not want to play, and she batted last. And that's how we worked it out, so, and, and that, those games were so much better because your, your players were playing the entire game and everybody's, you know, getting more experience. The issue with that was, we had to cut our season in half. I was told we could only sign up for fourteen games. So, each team only got half and half, they had to share. So, I still, as much as that was better.
Well, the only thing with the three, so what I said to one, to the A B C is that you can't actually schedule more games if the budget allows it, because the, the players can only play in a certain amount of games.
Oh, okay.
You can schedule more games, but each player's only allowed to play a certain amount of games.
Gotcha, yeah.
That's why there's a schedule. Yeah, so if you had the eighteen games of basketball?
Right.
Varsity players can only play eighteen, even if they play a JV game, that still counts as a game, so.
Okay.
And they go back out, they lost the game. So, it's, it's the same thing in any sport, but.
Gotcha.
There are things to look forward to, but I mean, that's not the goal, right?
Right, right.
And we get it, we know what's going on. I had a conversation with Mr. Allison just the other day, people were asking about him, uh, from the other side, you know?
Yeah.
It's a tough one, because you want to make sure that there's a program going forward on both sides.
Absolutely.
We, we don't get, we can't really get involved in, like, negotiations or anything, we have to count on the recommendation from the superintendent, and I think you have a better one, uh, better grasp.
Mm-hmm.
He's got a better grasp of where we need to go going forward, whether we're going to do, listen, if we don't have numbers and we look at a snapshot, we say, oh, four to, four to twelve-three, we don't have enough boys to play baseball, we don't have enough girls to play softball. But, um, maybe it's, one of those sports may that we might, might have to start looking at other, other options here, you know, for things kids are going to go out for. Because the mergers, the only benefit, the only downfall to the mergers, right, is you're, is you're going to get over, you're going to get overburdened on teams, and if you can't split those teams, you got, it's going to be a problem.
Yes.
On either side. Patrick, Patrick sat on the bench for a whole year, played one inning a game in seventh grade, and then played three innings a game, and, or four innings a game or something, and the next year, I understood that, but it's a lot of, lot of time for them too, it's probably seventeen kids and eighteen kids in it, those, when they were doing, right, a lot of those kids stopped playing.
Right, right, and that's what I'm afraid of.
So, they're going to have a further baseball problem.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of, is like, because of this, now we're getting kids who maybe used to be interested, who no longer are. So, just to kind of give you still about last year, when we ran those two teams, another thing that I tried to prevent was the, the transportation. It's a twenty-minute ride, whether they're, we're going that way and then twenty minutes back, or they're coming this way and going back. So, I said, I was going to be the person going back and forth. So, I, uh, borrowed the Ford Edward van, and I would run practice at Hartford from three-thirty to five, get in the van, drive back to McIntyre Park at practice, five-thirty to seven, every single day. Two teams, you know, two practices, and clearly, again, that was better, because I could do more with less girls, right? But I'm going crazy driving back and forth. And, and just to point out, to be clear, just, you know, to say, I didn't get paid extra for that, I didn't ask to be paid extra for that. You could offer me a hundred times what I was paid for that, and I wouldn't want it. Just to say, like, I didn't, I still didn't feel like me running around back and forth and the girls' season getting cut in half was worth it. I, it was better than twenty-three girls, but it wasn't a hundred percent season experience like every other district gets. Um, so, just to keep on going again, right, so the season's cut in half, uh, this year, because I try my best to monitor girls as they move from seventh grade all the way up to twelfth grade. I felt confident that with, based on returning numbers and current Ford Edward signups, that we actually could field more teams than we had before. That, because we have, Ford Edward has eleven girls currently, as I speak, signed up for modifying, and we have twenty-four girls signed up ninth through twelve. Okay, and Hartford should have twelve returning varsity players. And there are six freshmen, six freshmen that should be up for grabs. And I say that because freshmen do not have to be on varsity, they do not have to be on JV, they could be down on modified, which is what other districts in our area do. There are other districts that are larger than us that do not have JVs, and they keep their freshmen down, and they have a full modified and a whole, full of varsity, and their season is still successful. So, I thought that, you know, that if we could have as many different teams as possible, even just for just one year, that that would be better, like, everybody would get more playing time, Ford Edward girls would get playing, more playing time, Hartford girls would get more playing time, and that is kind of, I've got the goal of us talking. Um, and then I, uh, I was reaching out more, and from the sounds of communications that I'm getting from athletes, that there are at least five girls that played last year that are not yet signed up over in Hartford. And three of those girls I know are juniors that had played when I first started coaching in seventh grade, and they've played all the way up through, and they even played in the summer league, and they have yet to sign up. So, they're not involved in those numbers that I just said. Um, so, I guess what I'm trying to highlight is, is when we're expressing that there might be, again, too many girls on JV, one of the suggestions was, we would just have an A and a B team again, you know, or try to divide it up. So, we have two teams that are back to kind of normal size, but the issue on JV, yeah. And, and I guess I'm just kind of trying to highlight, hey, there's only, we're, that, this time, it sounds like there's two girls that we're missing. Last year, we were short one girl, and we cut our modified in half. This year, we're short two girls, and it sounds like we're trying to cut our JV in half. And I feel like there are people, not just in this community, but in Hartford's community, that may not even know how close we are to this number. Like, if it's that close, just a couple more girls, what's that?
How many freshmen out of the group?
Our group or their group?
The JV altogether.
Well, so, the, the issue is, is that I know out of my group, uh, I'd have to look up on my phone, I could tell you that number. But for their group, I know last year I had six eighth graders. But they, when they communicated their numbers, won't, have not expressed what the age groups are in those numbers. Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know how many have.
How many do you figure it's going to be, what's the total number? Including there, it's just your estimate?
For, for what?
JV.
If they.
We'll have, including them.
Oh, sorry, so that should be sixteen girls. Sixteen girls.
Okay, so if you, so if you say left three unmodified?
Right, I, I'm saying, the, the, they've already suggested that there might be a few, that they feel like they want their varsity to be a competitive varsity, as do we. Right, we don't want a bunch of girls on our varsity team that don't need to be there just to sit the bench.
Right.
Right, so we're saying, this is the amount of girls we would like, and then we can still have a competitive JV team. But they are suggesting that they don't want to try to have their own modified and keep the freshmen all the way down, and they have a small, like a normal-sized team on modified. They'd rather over.
How many do we have on modified?
We have eleven.
Right now?
Yep. We have eleven.
So, if you left three down and you had sixteen, you have thirteen and fourteen, that'd be a lot better.
Eh, eh.
Fourteen on modified, thirteen on the JV. If you left three freshmen down total.
All the way down, brought them all the way down?
If you brought them on modified. If you look, if you see your combined number of sixteen.
Oh, so sorry, they have four on modified too, so they want four on modified, and then plus, and again, this is just as of today because they're, we don't know official numbers. So, just to say, to maybe highlight something, you can play with eight. Uh, it's not the best case scenario, you take out every ninth batter, but you know what, last year we played with eight, we had a girl get hurt, we had people sick, and we still won the game. And to be honest with you, if I was a player, I would rather be on an eight-girl team where I'm playing the entire time and I, and okay, we taken out, but maybe we could still win versus being, sitting on the bench on an overstaffed JV team. Um, so, I guess I just wanted to say, I'm imploring you to hear from players and families that have experienced this merger before. Uh, I believe with just an ounce of effort in recruiting, that's the key issue, the issue is recruiting, we would be able to see districts have, both districts have more playing time. And, uh, last year, I actually went, before a season started, to try to have like a rallying speech to the Hartford School District, like, hey, come on, let's try to get some girls to show up. Again, who am I, I mean that. But, um, I, I don't, I've, I've offered to go there again this year, and it has, I have not heard anything back about that. So, uh, I, I just feel like I can't keep motivating girls to stay in this program, hoping that they finally end up on a normal-sized team, competitive team, just for it to not happen year after year after year. And I totally understand merging for survival, totally. But it feels like not everybody's doing all that they can to build the program, and instead accepting that the merger is just going to last forever. If the opportunity presented itself to not merge, even for just this season, I'm not saying I'm advocating for this forever, but I'm just saying for this season, I don't see how both districts wouldn't do everything that they can to have the smallest teams possible, so that all of our girls get the most playing time. And I, I, you know, obviously, I've been on those large teams, and I feel like they should only happen if there was really no other options. At the end of the day, everyone's going to have more fun and a more impactful season being on a smaller team, and we should be striving to achieve this if possible. Our girls and coaches will be burnt out from dealing with the same chaos every year, and I really, to point out, I really feel like, how do we expect players to be able to compete at the varsity level when they do not receive any playing time at the sub-varsity level? So, I, again, I encourage the board to listen to community members who have experienced this mergers, the ones who have witnessed their daughters get one at-bat, or play in every other inning, or their season has been cut short.
The question is, Paige, you're telling ourselves something, most of it, we already know, the problem is, there's no solution. We can't say, okay, we're going to, we're going to sell, we're going to say, okay, cut baseball, because that's what we're going to do.
No, 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 I don't think baseball and softball should be spoken together at all. I think that's a key issue.
That's not a reality.
Well, they're not even the same sport.
You're only one school.
But.
They do tie them together.
So, is that, that is saying that the girls' sports is ju, is tied to boys?
To them.
So, the girls' sports matter less than the boys?
For them it is, for them it is because their boys don't need us.
But.
They're, they're in the same situation that you're in with them. It's a, it's a catch-twenty-two, they, they need us for softball, we need them for baseball.
So, we, you have to tell the girls, sorry, we don't care about your softball experience, because the boys' program, that's a totally different sport.
I would like. Paige, if you wanted to sell the boys down the river because there's girls, it's been just the opposite way, but the girls had no numbers, and the boys only had numbers. And we, we had mergers on the girls' side. We can't, and if, and if, and if we sold them down football or one of those others, they would, and our guy, when we had that, they wouldn't have, let us do the sports at their place. Like, there's always a given table, we can't sell one part of the table.
But, but that's, I think that's a key point.
Baseball adds.
I'm not trying to say that Hartford, oh, well, what I'm trying to explain that, I actually, I sincerely believe that they actually have more numbers and more athletes than they might even realize, because there has been no out. I mean, you might know me, right? Yeah, I speak to Pat all the time about, hey, are we playing football, are we playing basket? I, I talk to all kids all day, all year, trying to encourage them for sports.
Right.
I don't know if that's happening over there.
Listen, you're speaking to the choir, I've been running sports in this town for twenty-five years and begging kids to play off the street and making every single level have kids, that's what I've done for twenty-five years. I am not a, an anti-sports person in any way.
Of course, I'm not suggesting you are.
But here's the thing, we can't control Hartford, they tie the two together, there's nothing we can do about it. If we say, okay, babe, we're not taking your softball, kids are going to say, okay, we're not giving you, we're not taking your baseball.
But the difference between that is, is that if they cut off us for baseball, we actually wouldn't be able to have a baseball team. Or I'm saying, if we cut them, I'm not, I don't even want to use that language, if we said to Hartford.
So, that's the fact, it's the worst for us. If they, you're saying if we, if we don't, if you tell them, they still have a team.
I'm saying the Hartford program is better than it should be, and I think the key issue with that is that there's no modified coach at that level recruiting girls. And if somebody was in that building and said, I'm going to coach modified softball, I, I'm sure that more girls would show up. And I genuinely believe that if they were, that they told their girls, they're, we need two girls and we can have our own team this year.
That's, that's hard for. But that's hard for.
Absolutely, yeah.
We can't tell them what they have to do, we can only say, do you want to merge with us? If they say no, we got no baseball, and it may never come back.
I think that's an extremely unfair thing.
I think it's an extremely unfair thing.
To, to have.
Softball's in that same position if we didn't sell one down the river. Or if another girls' sport went down, we wouldn't sell that down the river, we could do better.
I, again, so when was the last time that the conversation?
There are modified, there are JV kits, there are modified baseball kits and JV kits, and those guys will all be gone, there will be no coaches.
Can I ask a question? So, when was the last time that Hartford was asked, like, about the merger and we talked with them? Last year? Okay.
No, I, we just talked with Hartford many times leading up to this meeting here.
Okay.
Everything, and, and thought we should support the softball going independent, I had conversations with Paige and was headed in that direction all along.
Right, okay.
Um, so.
Are we seeking options?
Paige's connection to Hartford with what the numbers are, because she's coached a lot of those girls and who's playing and not playing, I don't have that kind of close information, but I have had conversations with the superintendent about where we are on all of this. And I, in the, in the big picture of moving this forward, given the time of year that it is, I felt like my original decision for our softball to not merge with Hartford, separate from baseball, um, was caught Hartford off guard, that they weren't prepared for that. All along, they assumed we were merging with them. And I felt in here in the eleventh hour, um, that's what they were assuming, because they were not informed back in October when I had had merger discussions, that we were, were to notify them that we were going independent, it didn't happen. Ford Edward didn't notify Hartford back in October when I had a merger discussion. Ford Howard didn't notify Hartford back in October when I had a merger deal that our intentions were to go independent.
Okay.
So here we are, we've got a program and coaches that have done everything right to be a standalone softball program. Hartford was probably resting on their laurels a little bit with, like Paige has indicated, as far as recruiting, getting their coaches in place and things because they assumed we were merging. And just in the eleventh hour, couldn't pull that plug on them and leave for their modified girls without a team and some other situations in place. But I clearly told them that our program has done everything right and we can be a standalone program at three levels, which is very impressive. Uh, and so we made the tough decision to tell our program, here, we gotta go another year with the merger, sub-varsity merger, which would be modified at JV. Um, but I've also asked Hartford to please consider taking their ninth graders and dispersing them up and down, just like Paige indicated, so that it would really be a modified merger with maybe a player or two coming to our JV, because we do have large numbers and I want those JV players to get that quality experience. So I've had all those conversations and then indicated that at the end of last week to.
So with the separation of those players, would we be playing all fourteen to sixteen games? Or would we have the AV teams like we have?
Well, I'm gonna, the superintendent from Hartford's ninth high school said that we want our A.D.s to work very creatively to create as many opportunities for girls to play in authentic experiences, whether they gotta divide the schedule, they gotta take something like Chris is recommending with a C-team where you can get as multiple experiences. It's a short season, I'm not worried about the budget number of paying for officials and bussing, it's a short season, we're talking about a few things. We've, as superintendents, asked our A.D.s to work at that, but obviously they can't do that till we know exactly what the number is when the season starts here in the next couple of weeks.
And we probably won't know that official number until the first day of tryouts. Because this has been a reoccurring thing where a girl might say, oh, I quit. And then they, all of a sudden, they're, they have their people working and they're showing up on the, in the tryout day and now there's more numbers than we anticipated and, yeah. So again, I'm here because I I genuinely believe that I'm advocating for Ford Howard and Hartford girls. Hartford girls are in the same exact situation as us, being on teams too big. And again, I'm not asking for anything permanent, I'm just saying if this year, if it was, it's this close, it's this close to trying to have, we could have a modified JV varsity and a modified varsity five teams instead of four. To me, that is worth it, just for a year, just to get more girls involved. Because I I feel like I'm like a salesman where every single year I say, just be tough this year and next year's gonna be better. And then next year and they say, Miss Timmy, thi- this is happening again, right? And I say, oh, just this one more year and the next year's gonna be better and then this is happening again. I mean, again, I I'm very excited because I genuinely feel we have a con- a a strong varsity uh, team, we can have a strong varsity team this year. The first, I mean, last year, if you know anything about our varsity team last year, we were swamped with girls. We had to pull all of our freshmen and everybody up to varsity because we had literally, we had girls that moved into our district and were, wanted to play softball, which was great, but they'd never played before. So we weren't really confident that they were, we didn't know what was gonna happen, so we had a massive varsity. I know the goal for this year, speaking to the other softball coaches, is we want a real varsity. And that way, girls that should be at the JV level, play at the JV level instead of getting pulled up to sit the bench on varsity, that that is the goal for this year. So, you know, and again, i- if, you know, I am totally fine merging at modified. Fifteen girls, that's nothing compared to the numbers I told you I had twenty-three and eighteen, that's nothing, right? But for, I am highly, um, you know, saying that please, I would really consider about what we're doing to the JV level girls. I really am worried about girls feeling like, especially the ones that we may potentially pulled back down so they were on, they were at a crazy seventh grade, crazy eighth grade, then ninth grade year got pulled up to varsity and now we're gonna tell them, you gotta go back down to JV and your seasons, maybe cut around or you're on a huge team. That is a tough sales pitch.
With the sixteen for JV including Hartford?
Yes.
How many of those are Hartford?
They, as last I heard, they said a few, so I thought that I added three.
So we're carrying thirteen of our own girls?
Potentially. Yeah. So, thank you, I I, uh, I got my list of things, but um, yeah, I thank you for listening to me and, and again, I'm really nervous about the JV level. Modified, a modified coach, they have four girls, I'll take them, absolutely, no big deal. But our JV girls, I I feel like I can't go back to them and say, you are, you are merged at JV. When they've been working hard and doing everything right to then have to share a team still.
You might, you might have to.
Well, I'm hoping not to.
If you don't, I know, I, no, that's not ideal, but if they don't budge, that's what, that's what I was.
Well, I would say this, if we really wanna talk about exactly numbers and math, if from the sounds of it, again, I'm not exactly sure, they might also have a, like a ten-girl varsity, which I would say is a great number for them, right? Um, if they have a few freshmen, that's thirteen on varsity and versus sixteen JV, I know it's JV and varsity, but that's what I'm thinking, like, they don't have to, we don't have to merge at JV then. They could, if they don't wanna pull them down to modified and try to have their own modified, okay. But they could totally be on a varsity and it would, they've had, uh, they had a fourteen-girl varsity last year. So it's not much different, I would say, it's better, one girl better, so, thank you. If you have any more questions, please let me know and if you'd like to see the numbers, I'll, I can show you anytime.
I'm just interested in how, how can push.
You can see how crazy I have everything written down.
Yeah, and I hope you understand what we're saying, I mean, if I, if we could do it, it's just yaps, right?
Thank you, Paige. Yeah, no, I I understand, tha- that is what I mean, like, I I feel like people don't know exactly the numbers, right? And so it's kind of like, what is going on? And that's why I've kind of been pulling my hair out, cause I look at the numbers every day all year long, trying to figure out what.
We're just trying to figure it out this year, I think that it's very solvable in the future, going forward.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Paige. Okay, the next section of our meeting, uh, something we've been putting off for a while as part of the reorganization that we did at the beginning of the fiscal year. We have a bunch of subcommittees to the board. Each committee is supposed to have three people and an alternate, we need to finish stacking those out. Uh, Paige, do you have the lists of who's on each?
Again, I printed them for all of you as well.
Oh, great. Okay, so the first one we're welcoming out is Budget Finance and Audit Committee. We've got Chris as chairperson.
John, uh, John's been sitting in that.
John's been on that one?
And now that you.
In place of Taylor.
Are down to seven, you can do like two on your I think that you'll notice, like, some of them already had two, you're, you can also only do two if you want it.
Like two and an alternate?
Yes, but that's up to you guys, how many you you do on there.
I mean, there's no.
As long as we don't go over four.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know, what do you guys think, should we start with three regular numbers on each committee or?
No, because people are gonna have to go more often. I'll go to two if 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 it's available, pick a couple you like and you're all set.
So Budget Finance Audit, we'll go with Chris and John as regulars. How about an alternate?
I'll do it.
Ken does an alternate. Okay, next one is Personnel, Briefings and Negotiations. Got Adra, John, and Tim, myself. Wanna go Adra and John and Tim as an alternate?
You're Tim, so you're gonna be the alternate, you wanna be on the team?
You think John the alternate if he's doing.
Yeah, that's not it, that's not, here, do what you want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give, I'll be a regular member, I'll put John as the alternate on that one.
There you go.
Oh, we've.
I know, well, but then we meet continuously in certain years. Okay, Policy Review, we've got Tim Clark, Audrey, oh, can we have an alternate for that one?
I would be the alternate on that one.
You're already on.
Maybe someone's supposed to jump to the alternate, maybe somebody else wants to jump on.
Maybe somebody else, be honest. Then I'll be the alternate.
Tara, do you have your eye on any of these?
Would you like to be on my committee?
I definitely wanna be um, on athletics. Um, just because I'm like smoothing in.
I would prefer to stay as the alternate.
On athletics?
So Sarah's on it, Taylor's gone, you could just move Adra in.
We jumped athletics.
Oh, you don't, you don't wanna be on, no, because Sarah's on it.
I know.
So if she just takes Taylor's spot and her, which says Taylor, then I can stay as the alternate.
Okay, so back to Policy Review, we still need an alternate for that one.
That's right.
Tara, you wanna be alternate for Policy?
Sure, yes.
I know, I'm trying to calm myself down.
Uh, Capital Project, we've got John, Sarah, and Tim. Sarah, you wanna be an alternate? Okay.
I don't wanna throw Ken into the water.
I was just gonna say.
Whichever one you want. Yeah, I wanna be on Capital Project.
Oh, you're not on there.
I'll be on any of them, whatever you want.
I think that's a good, good idea.
I did the alternate because they already had two there, but I'll do whichever.
Why don't you take my spot? I'll take my spot on Capital Projects.
Somebody's gotta go alternate.
Sarah will be the alternate.
On Capital?
Yeah.
You don't care. Gubli, Gubliyama's the chairperson, you can give an hat out. He likes the Jews.
Will Sarah be taking the chair of athletics?
Yes.
Okay.
The only member. Tara's the, yeah, the other member.
Jumped on, one of your voters, and he has.
I'm gonna be the third chair.
I need to be in it.
So athletics is gonna be Sarah as the chair, Tara as the regular, and Chris as an alternate.
I'm glad you're aboard with the capital.
Wanna know if you wanna be going on board?
Yeah.
Hey, that's Skylight's knowledge, man, that was like on the sky, perfect.
The barn.
Oh, that, yeah.
He's playing, go in the barn. That's pretty sharp, that shot just.
I already volunteered, you don't have to smooth.
Don't worry, it's the last one, I'm not stealing nothing.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, everyone, next part of our meeting is reserved for presentations. And this evening, we have a budget presentation by Chris Rader and Ben Halsey.
Sit with a bottle of water that we handed out nine cases of today. Total story here, they were more hydrated today than their entire lives because we had.
They only drink water with a bottle, so they won't drink out of the top.
Three bottles of water, they were. Yeah, we had, we had to laugh because it was a scenario here with the water main break. We put out three tables of water, one in the main lobby, one in the high school by the T.B. there before you go up to the auditorium, and then one at the elementary. And we put three cases out at first thing this morning and eight fifteen, we're replenishing. Uh, ten fifteen, we're replenishing and we had to laugh because they drank more water today than any other school they ever. Which is not a bad thing. So, all right, uh, Budget Workshop number three.
Correct.
Uh, Chris put a ton of work in, uh, drafting the presentation tonight, which is some new information, which we haven't covered yet in our two other previous presentations, uh, which he's gonna take us through. And then it's a recap of the numbers of the presentations that we have done with a final number and how it relates to the average taxpayer and how it relates to the bottom line with the tax cap and all those things. So it's, it's a combination of some new material, refreshing the material we've covered in the two other presentations and then how it all ties together at the end. So that's the purpose of tonight's presentation with the intent, uh, as we've talked, we, we wanna get to a point here quickly this spring so that we can adopt it in time to then get all the required publications out to the public and submit and everything the way we want to. To our credit, it is built in a really good shell, so we, we, we did build a nice shell here with some timeframe so that we can make adjustments based on how conversations go.
Absolutely.
All right, so Chris, go ahead.
So again, we are, our goal is to provide our business direction through transparency and detail. And transparency, again, is first and foremost, so again, this is not be like a shell game or shady business. We really wanna make sure you guys, as the board, also know where every cent is spent, so transparency is also our major goal here. So we have the table at tonight so that we can make sure everybody knows exactly where every cent is, we're on board with that. And our number projections, again, are based on historical baselines. We consult with our team and also business costs, so what we anticipate for next year with inflations and all that. Tonight's final workshop three, these are the topic points, we will review our revenue, we'll do the update, we'll give the final tax levy and tax cap, uh, the tax impact with house assessments. The, uh, by law, we are required to present in the three-part budget with the administrative program capital. We also have the foods, our school food service budget, our reserve plan propositions, fund balance projection update, and our final draft of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So here again is our revenue updates based on the governor's run. Uh, we are also trying to highlight the areas where we have significant decreases, as we pointed out previous slides before. The BOCs is because we used to invest the business office with the F.E.H. BOCs and since that five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is not invested every year, we actually did lose some back in return on investment with BOCs revenue. Um, but also buildings, uh, we, because we don't have the debt service that we had previously, uh, we have now been able to create a capital project that we approved last budget, but that also significantly was a decrease, so that is where our beat is currently. And here at Ford Howard, again, we have seven million, eight hundred thousand dollars from state aid allocations of reserve, but also additional revenue is a million, fifty thousand dollars. Property taxes and star is about three million, seven hundred and two thousand. Appropriate fund balance for this year, we're looking at a million, uh, eighty thousand to balance our budget. This is the different breakdowns here, so you can see the percentages. And again, I wanted to present our ratios of building aid is still ninety percent, transportation is ninety percent, and our BOCs aid is seventy-seven percent. And this is our updated tax levy and tax cap. Our tax levy this year for twenty-five, twenty-six is three million, seven hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three and the tax cap is two point nineteen percent. And this is how the tax impact is on our real property assessments, so without star, uh, we looked at the different hundred thousand assessment, hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand and you see the current taxes in the twenty-four, twenty-five versus our estimated for twenty-five, twenty-six. And taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, it is an increase of sixty-four dollars and fifty cents for the year or five dollars and thirty-eight cents for the month. And this is our three-part budget, so again, administrative costs, capital costs, program costs, that's how it's broken down. So you'll see an increase with the administrative of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five. Capital, again, because of the debt service reduction, that is why it significantly decreased. Uh, in a program, we have three hundred and fifty-one thousand increase from last year. And seventy-five percent of our budget is program, thirteen percent is capital, and twelve percent is administrative. And this is our food service, I always talk about how it's a budget within a budget, so it's kind of self-sustaining. It takes money to invest into the BOCs to have that kind of run, but this has been an amazing partnership through that BOCs because in the past, we've actually had to use transfer capital out of the general fund to even balance this budget, But they actually, with the reserve or with the way that they create the revenues and state reimbursements with lunch, breakfast, and snacks, we actually are able to balance that budget. And our director right now, Jeff, is amazing at doing his exploration to find out how we can get even more state reimbursements. We have a grant that we got the breakfast cart, so we've seen increases in breakfast participation. So those numbers look really solid. So going forward, again, we don't anticipate any transfer from capital to, to this, to balance it because it actually self-sustains. And here is our reserve plan. So I've taken each reserve and I've shown how it's created, the purpose of it, and kind of what we expect for next year, our current actual balance, what we anticipate for at the end. So workers' comp, we actually, in the budget, will have about thirty-six thousand dollars that we budgeted for workers' comp, and we're planning on using reserve, that's part of the reallocation. Keep in mind, these are not savings, these are not areas to just on a rainy day. We really need to show how that movement of money happens. This is best practice for Edward, and in the past, it's kind of like, oh, we just hit it, this money away, it stays there forever. This is one of the areas where the governor really is spotlighting. If we don't show how we are navigating and moving our monies around, we actually will show them we might not need more aid. So we want to really do our due diligence of being fiscal managers here at the school to make sure we're showing how that money happens. So by taking it out of reserves to then maybe balance it into that specific year budget, then we can take whatever comes out of fund balance and then replenishes them from year over year. So that's kind of what the plan will be. So that's workers' comp. Here is our ERS, retirement reserve. In twenty-five, twenty-six, we have budgeted eighty-five thousand for the ERS, and we're planning to use, again, eighty-five thousand dollars out of this reserve to balance that part of the budget. Insurance reserve, this is just, this is something we use for if by chance there is a major insurance claim against the school. This isn't something we have even really put a lot into the budget specifically for that because these are things that we just don't really anticipate. That's why this reserve is created, so if by chance there is some kind of an insurance claim, we have this reserve to offset that cost. So this one, we don't have any plans to use for balancing because it's not actually a balanced, it's not a budgeted line item. And here is our EBLR, or we call the accrued employment benefits liability reserve. This is used a lot for those who have full sick banks, and at the end of each year, we then will use this reserve to pay out these sick times. This year is covered because last year's budget was kind of budgeted for it, but next year we anticipate two more retirees. Fifty-four thousand, that's what we have budgeted for, and we'll use the reserve EBLR to pay for that fifty-four thousand dollars. So that's where you see the monies flowing. Here is your unemployment insurance reserve. We have it budgeted for twenty-five, twenty-six at ten thousand, we have not touched that usually. On rare occasions, it might be a couple thousand here and there, but again, for budgetary purposes, we budget ten thousand, and from a reserve standpoint, we will try to balance that out with another ten thousand if we need that reserve. And here is our TRS, teacher retirement reserve. We have for twenty-five, twenty-six, six hundred and fifty, sixty-five, four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for TRS, and we're expensing the one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five for the TRS reserve. Tax retribuary, again, is one of those reserves that if by chance there's a claim against the school with a tax reimbursement, usually it's a big property that felt that they were maybe under-assessed. This is a way that we can, again, build this. After every year, we need to take the twenty thousand that we put in, or whatever our tax retribory amount, and put it back to general fund and then replenish this reserve. So that's how best practice is, and we're gonna, again, make sure it stays with the twenty thousand for next year. And we then, after this year, we'll make sure it goes back to zero, we'll put it back into the general fund and then replenish it back at twice. Transportation and maintenance reserve, this is actually a very helpful reserve. We've been using this quite often the last few years, just not having any extra impact to the tax base. We need vehicles, we need our transportation to be up to the snuff that we need to make sure that we actually have all the vehicles in our fleet. We are seriously under-fleeted because we are still borrowing vans from Luns Falls. We've done that now two out of the three years I've been here. This proposition, basically, of getting a new vehicle, new bus with a lift, and with three buses that, or three vans, that will actually help us become the fleet that we need to be for our goals and to make sure we have transportation up to the level that we're looking at. So with this set, the total of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, three seventy-one, seventy-eight will be used to take that transportation reserve to make sure there's no tax impact on the, on the base. This one's a little wonky because I've looked out every local district, and the only reason this reserve ever should have been recreated is based on selling or buying of a property. And it's usually related to a sale of a property. We don't have that here at Fort Edward, so I'm not really sure why that debt service mandatory one was created. But with that said, we can use this reserve to use what we've budgeted for debt service and so that we can kind of liquidize this reserve and use that money specifically in a debt service payment. So that's with the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we have three hundred and ninety-five thousand budgeted for the debt service, and we were gonna use this reserve to help offset some of that cost. And this is the summary of those reserves. So in our twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we have a million, forty-five thousand is what all those budgeted lines equal, and the reserve allocation will be six hundred and thirty thousand. And using the transportation, again, using that as a proposition. I just wanted to show you how aid works because this is really kind of exciting. I like doing this, this is the stuff I love at night. But because our transportation aid is ninety percent, the cost of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for those vehicles, we as a school district will only have to pay thirty-seven thousand dollars. The rest of that comes back in aid. So it's really kind of cool when you realize we have an entire fleet that we've only paid for thirty-seven thousand, which is basically less than most cars go today. But then this is how it comes back. So revenue per year will be about sixty-six thousand dollars, and that will be anticipated revenue aid for the next five years. So that's how that's paid back. But the exciting part is by using revenue aids, using the aid ratios with the BOCs building and transportation, we can actually generate these revenues that then therefore the governor really can't touch because these are based on true revenues that we've helped create based on our ratios. And this is, again, part of what we do as strategic people, trying to show how our monies can stretch, how that dollar can stretch. But that's one of the things I wanted to show you, is just from a revenue standpoint and from aids, how we can actually take something that looks really, really scary as a six hundred, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar money item, and you're actually saying we're getting three hundred and twenty-nine thousand of that back. So that's how that works. Yeah.
Let's go skip back up here to your reserves.
Yep.
You're right there. So reserve allocation, which, which means that that's what you're putting in back into the reserve? That's what we're spending in the reserve?
We'll be spending out, yes, spending our reserves because we have to show money movement because that's a big thing that the governor doesn't like.
But what's that do to your budget?
It balances our budget.
You're just putting it in and taking it out, which is basically you're actually raising your budget by that amount, right?
Not necessarily, because a lot of these, we are budgeting it, so therefore we anticipate certain costs, but not every one of those things will.
So you budgeted to spend it in the same year?
Well.
So it's coming from there to spend it in the same year, so it's, I don't know, I'm confused on that. How does that not show as additional budget money?
Well, some of these things we won't be spending, like again, unemployment reserve, we rarely even spend any. So that will be a, it just shows like that offset. We want to make sure that we show.
How much of do you actually use on school outside of the funding and non-funding the reserves? How much reserve are we using this year just to balance budget outside of this?
We really have not been doing that, that's part of the problem.
We don't really need to balance, we got, so we're equal, we're not taking money from reserve to balance our budget.
That's bad, that was been bad practice, you want to show reserve.
I just wanted to ask questions about that because that was practice. And I want, I want to make clear that that's not happening.
Correct, correct, yeah, no, we definitely need to make sure that's happening.
Yeah, because, you know, it's, it is unclear on here. You know, it comes through as, it's clear when you explain it, but it comes through as, here's your revenue, one million of it's from reserve.
Well, it's reserve and other resource revenue.
I know, but I'm just saying, because it's not gonna be, because we're reading that at some point, like they might want to know like a little bit of what explanation is, I think.
Yeah, some of that would be like miscellaneous revenue, like on, on, one example would be, we got seventy-five thousand dollars of bullet aid because what happens is then from the legislation, they say, oh, Fort Edward gets this money. So we get that kind of money thrown in. So there's no other lines, we throw it into miscellaneous revenue. So those kind of revenues do add up, but between the reserve allocation and the other revenues that come that we don't have like state aid related, then that's how we then be able to show that extra million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question, though, yeah, I'm sorry that that wasn't completely clear. So here is our fund balance projection. So again, right now, we are currently at almost two million, two hundred thousand dollars of extra fund balance, which is about seventeen percent over what we're supposed to have. We are only allowed four percent according to the law, which with our current budget at the sixteen, at thirteen, six, it would be five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So that's another thing we have to show is that we have intent to use, that's why it's also good to have the appropriated fund balance because that will start lowering some of these numbers so that therefore we're not going to be on the list of the governor of, okay, we don't need the aid. We definitely need state aid, and we have to make sure we're listening to what her guidelines are because she's pretty clear on how she's playing this card game. We have to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. So yes, we don't want to show we have all this money, but there's ways to make sure that it kind of balances our budget. Like even this year, we, we put in about, actually, the next slide will show. So we have almost half a million dollars. So we're anticipating, actually, looking at the books right now, we're looking at not even using a cent of that. So when we're trying to say, okay, here's our costs, and this is the revenues, how to balance that budget, we actually won't be using about half a million dollars of that. And that goes right back to the fund balance, the numbers that we're even at the sixteen, seventeen percent, we're talking is back to twenty-one percent. So this will allow us to show them how we can balance our budgets, show how money moves, how it's fluid. But we haven't really, again, used a lot of the fund balance, like they've been warning us to use. We just want to make sure we're getting the state aid that we're expecting to get.
Were you using any for the project?
The project, we already have invested, so that one point two is already set aside, so that's actually earmarked for that from last year. So that's not including these numbers, it's on its own, it's actually set aside for like a capital reserve, okay? Good question. And here is our final draft. So again, if we need to drill it down, like some were saying, previous presentations did actually have a lot of these drilled down, but if we need further to explore, that's completely fine. But each one of these are the accounts for our draft budget. So this is just bringing them down in different slides, you'll see the different percent increases. Yeah, it's just all this, all the, all the accounts that keep our business going. And the final one, you'll actually see last year's budget at thirteen, three, eight, six, this year's proposed budget at thirteen, six, three, two. And keep in mind, this is also including all of the contracts. Our teachers' contract was finalized, we did the support staff, we have another full year of that contract. So we're talking all of these embedded costs that go over. We only have a two thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine fifty-two increase or a one point eight four increase over last year's budget.
Is that last line of your fund for the outlay project, capital outlay project, a hundred thousand?
Correct, yes, that is exactly what that is, that's for the capital outlay. Right now, you guys will see the seeker, the next part of our presentation tonight as you guys approve things. But that will be for pipes at the school. Talking with Steve specifically, we had a couple options, but we really feel school right now still needs the infrastructure to include, including pipes to, to be fixed. He saw, he showed me some pictures last year that were kind of scary. So actually talking with our architects, that is the plan, so we will be using capital outline money specifically for pipe infrastructure. And again, that is using aid with the ratio, so building aid with that, you're only investing ten thousand dollars and you're getting ninety thousand dollars back in revenue. So that's how that works.
Five years is over too.
That's actually a broken down, it's embedded into like capital projects. Usually with capital outlay, it's like a one-year return, so one year for that, but capital projects usually are fifteen years. So, but this will actually be, once we keep doing this, it'll go right into capital projects and we'll generate revenue every year over.
Strategically, it makes sense to do a outlay every year.
Correct.
Yeah, and so we're working with the architects, working with Steve, and we have a capital project plan on a grand scheme, which is, are those that you take to your voters, you know?
Yep.
But our outlay has to also have a five and ten-year plan because, you know, this year it's the pipes, it may be the pipes again next year. I don't know, we can get it all done in one year.
It would hope it'd raise it to two fifty because you can't get much more than a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, a hundred thousand, when they originally approved this in legislation, you could get a lot of work for a hundred thousand, but those days are gone.
Correct.
But we need to have an outlay plan sequentially so that we take advantage of that because of that turnaround of the money. I mean, you're ten thousand dollars, you get ninety thousand dollars.
That's what we're still financing on, which is.
Yep, and our local BOCs is aware of.
You're leaving money on the table.
Trying to increase that, but it's kind of like right now staying on the legislative line, they're not.
Yeah, they've been holding for years.
Yeah, so unfortunately, like we know that a hundred thousand doesn't go that far, but still for us, a hundred thousand dollars, so we gotta stretch that dollar, so.
Especially if you do one every year.
Absolutely. And again, this, this year, we're doing the four A lights, last year we did the IT stuff. So we always have a plan that we're actually increasing our school, and as Ben said, once we have that plan, we're actually putting more money into our school and it's stretching the dollar. So that's exactly what we're doing, but those are the lines, please look at them. If you have any further questions, we definitely can dissect them further for you. But again, we're only a one point eight four percent higher than last year's budget with everything we've included, all of the strategic additions that we would like to have approved. But again, when you're talking all the contracts, everything right now is increased, it's only a one point eight four increase over last year's budget. So tax base isn't gonna feel the rub because we're actually able to stretch the money and push it into the areas that you're not feeling the impact. Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
It's very tough. Yep. Lots of work.
Fine. For the most part, it's gonna be pretty similar, they just want to have.
Okay, the next part of our meeting is administrative reports. So first off, we have a superintendent report.
Tim? What's that? There's others at the table.
I know most of you met, Nick, when you came in here, if you haven't had the chance, this first board meeting, he's been here for a couple of weeks, but Dr. Nick Kaproski joins us at the table here, serving as our interim principal and director of people personnel services. Welcome you to Fort Edward officially here at the board table, we're glad you're here and enjoy working with him, and as he gets his feet wet and dives into things, he's diving right into the fabric here, we're glad you're here. I'd also be remiss, I know he doesn't want these accolades, but I did share an email with the staff today, and I, I do think you should be acknowledged here with the people we work for. Chris Rader has completed his doctorate, and he was awarded his doctorate this weekend. Doctor Rader is sitting right next to the table, and I'd like to, you know, we're an institution of academics and, you know, we preach lifelong learning. And Chris is the, is the epitome of someone who always strives to learn something more, and I, and I'm really happy, congratulations. Appreciate it. Tomorrow, March eleventh, a few of us are setting up a, there's a job fair at BOCs in the evening and for all kinds, districts can set up a booth, it's like a promotional opportunity to set yourself up. It's for substitute positions, teaching positions, everything across the board. We looked at it as an administrative team, as an opportunity, going, well, Fort Edward, people who may not even realize, you know, if they're looking for jobs in the area in education, that Fort Edward is still here, and it's a great place to work. And so we've got some things set up promotionally, we're gonna set up a table from, for a couple hours at a job fair at BOCs tomorrow. And just continue to get our brand out there and see, you know, who's out there, and you never know. You can find a lot of neat people, we at least expect it, and you never know. So look forward to that tomorrow night. Friday, March twenty-first is our, our full day. Friday, March twenty-first is our, our full day superintendent's day, and I've reported about our structure that we have for those. We have a guest speaker in the morning that'll spend time with all of our faculty and staff. And then we have a multitude of professional development opportunities for them to choose from for the rest of the day. And then we have one half day left in April, and that will conclude our professional development opportunities for this school year. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to the casting crew of Suzacul this weekend. I mean, what a, what a great production. And to walk in at four fifteen and hop into the auditorium and see Mary Ann Stark just like looking like she's already pulled her hair out a few weeks ago, to where they ended up this weekend is in tribute to her and Sarah Taylor and all the others, and you know, Ryan Herman with the set. I mean, it's a thousand hands are involved in this thing. And from a superintendent perspective, I was extremely close to sit there in the auditorium and watch that performance. And that's all I have, because we've got a table of people here that also would like to speak. So thank you for that, any questions for anyone? I just want to say Ryan Herman's everywhere. You know, a little acknowledge that guy's memory thing, he always got some different roles he plays here, but he usually always has a smile on his face, he's a pretty good, pretty good man. Couldn't ask for one of many good people we've got here doing stuff for our kids.
Okay, thank you very much, next up, business office report.
Yes, so including our budget development, we've actually purchased a voting machine. We actually will be delivering, uh, we deliver it on site between March seventeenth and April first, just in time for our election. We've spent over five thousand dollars a year just for renting the machine. We did a cost analysis and a return of investment. It will happen in less than two years using BOSI's aid. We will now be able to own our own machine. We actually then could even do a special election if we wanted to. We were last year's capital project, we had to pretty much time it at the same time. This allows us to have that flexibility, having our own equipment on site. But just wanted to throw that out there, that's another reason of looking at these kind of options of buying our own equipment, not having to rent that, we just throw money into the wind. We actually get that, we own it. And again, less than two years of a return of investment. Updating, we're doing updating for the grants finance. So what happens is for every grant that we go out there and receive, we kind of give them a proposal, what we're gonna use, but this is the time of year where we kind of show what we're using and other ways to reallocate. And that's where we're at on that. Again, Ron Black is worth his weight in gold, he's phenomenal on helping us navigate that part beginning. We're now beginning our BOSI's final service requests, which we call the FSRs for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So we're basically compartmental about ten different BOSI's. So we collect all of what we kind of use as services, and we look at exactly what we use, what we need. And then we actually then, for our local BOSI's, go through the entirety and make sure we're getting together superintendent and the business office, make sure these are the services that we are paying for for next year and that we need. But we actually have a pretty good idea of what we're already doing. I just wanted you to know that that's the process right now. And we're also planning and preparing for potentially adding Amazon Prime business to our repertoire. Because right now, it allows teachers throughout the year, not just like one time of the year to order, we can kind of work it that way. But right now, we're kind of exploring that and the fact that we're just gathering information. I like to adopt, but I don't usually like to be the first adopter. I like to see how other people have like their labor pains. So there's some in the area that are kind of like that first adopters. And I'm gonna watch how they, in their own schools, operate and what the benefits and negatives, and try to learn from that experience and make it happen there forever. So that's still the plan, is for next year to do that, but I wanted you guys to be aware of that.
So you can order from Amazon, is that right?
And it would be free shipping.
I've been doing it for years, I love it. Because you have things that you can't find unless you get it from them.
Correct, so that's why we're also looking at it, because EDS has some limitations or, you know, there's like a timeframe related to it, this allows us a lot more flexibility.
It's a big help.
Yeah, so we're looking at that just because, I think that's the way for the future anyway. But I still want to wait till the kings or the labor pains are then taken care of. So that's what we're trying to do. That was, those are all of us updates, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris, next, principal report.
Oh, just a quick report, I just wanted to kind of introduce myself formally, and just give a quick, like thirty-second version of my background. I was a former specialized teacher and a socialized teacher, I pulled the middle of the high school level. I was an assistant principal, I was a building principal. And just some of my outside random skills, I guess you'd call it. I've been a volunteer firefighter for fifteen years and a EMT for twelve, so I have some knowledge in that area. And I'm also a school member where I live, so I want to thank you all for the service that you provide to the school and what the great salary that it comes with. So again, I just quick about myself. And I'm someone who is pretty open and honest, and if anyone ever needs anything from me, they can contact me anytime. So just some quick program, we've started for, on the DPS side, annual review season. So we're meeting with those students and those families to just go over how the current year program's going with them, and how next year looks for them, and what we're predicting for them, for their program for next year. And then on the principal's side, just I've been meeting staff and students and some families. And that's kind of the quick thirty-second version.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I'd have good work. Jessica, would you like to take an opportunity to report from your side of the house?
Sure. Just to piggyback on what Ben had said, we had over five hundred people attend this new school production over the weekend, which is a huge tribute to the program that we're building here. So a great job to everyone involved. A look back at what's been going on, I kind of was filling in for both sides of the house here. We had, back in February, we had over eighty students that participated in our mid-year incentive, where we did kind of a escape room challenge for them. They had a great time. And we also had some folks from the county come down and volunteer, some former students, and bring some items for kind of patting those students on the back behind that. Our kindergarten celebrated the hundred-year celebration and walked through the halls while all of our other friends cheered them on, which was a great moment here in Fort Edward. It's part month this month, and we're listening to what our older students had said during a student advisory committee meeting that we had last month, where they communicated the need and want to collaborate with the elementary side. So we've had different classrooms signing up to read all over the elementary, which has been a great collaboration. I think that's a great thing that we have here at our school. And those kids really look up to their older friends that they see in the hallway. So that's a way to kind of build community here. We had some students go to the Port Hudson Nursing Home last month as well, and really make an impact on residents, so that was fantastic. Looking ahead, I'm excited to announce that Fort Edward will have, for the first time in my knowledge, a Battle of the Books team going up to SUNY Anaradak tomorrow. So we have a group of students who had to read ten books. This is Rick Adeli, and this is Roar, definitely spearheaded that. And we're gonna be cheering them on as they get ready to leave tomorrow. And curriculum-wise, we're gonna start to introduce some Signs of Reading PD with our folks on the elementary side and kind of go over an overview with the rest of the group at a main meeting through some training through BOSI. So we talked about that at our faculty meeting. And that is about all that I have to report.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, building maintenance report.
Hi, everybody. Been, been really busy with, first of all, first of all, as everybody knows, been a lot of, lot of sickness, and my crew has really hit the mark on that. So I've had a lot of people out, a lot of trying to make sure we got coverage and everybody on cue where they need to be. Over the, over the vacation, we redesigned the kitchen. It was driving me nuts, because I can't stand to see Joy holding that hot oven door with a hot plate and have somebody standing right here and actually trying to get the food that way. So I reconfigured, changed the gas lines and everything, reconfigured. And now she pulls out from the side and goes into the warming oven, and from the warming oven comes across to kitchen. So nobody's gonna get burned anymore. And took care of some obstacles in the house. They got rid of the mixer, we had that auctioned off. Jeff did a fantastic job, so they got quite a bit of money for it. I helped, I helped load it on, I think the thing weighs as much as a car. And that was interesting, trying to...
I didn't realize you were that strong.
I wasn't, I wasn't an age. So anyway, we, we managed to reconfigure and take some things out. We got some other ideas that I'm working with. In the kitchen, there's been a lot of work. The dishwasher is down, it's been a problem, it's, it's getting tired. It's, it's been there for quite a long time. And right now, it's down, we're, tomorrow, I hope to get the new pump and motor back into, back in there, and then we should be good with the unit. But been a lot of issues I've taken care of, but she said we haven't had soap. We haven't been doing our dishes in there with soap, it's just been steaming hot water. But, you know, now there's soap, and we're working, we're working towards getting everything functional enough to snuff in there. Been working on a lot of the equipment, as snowplow equipment, obbit. The pusher blades and stuff have been worn, haven't been cleaning properly, haven't been doing things, you know, scraping good. With all the ice we've had, it's been in stores. So I've been getting in there and replacing a lot of stuff and, and the blades and different things on the pushers and stuff.
What's the wear like on those year to year?
What's the wear on those things like year to year? Do they get old quick?
If we had a winter like last year, you could probably get fifty years out of it. We have, the, the winter we've had this year, you know, it can wear. You, you can adjust them down and you can keep using them, but after a while, you just...
How about the old one, the rubber this one?
Piece of rubber in the bottom, you flip it up once and turn it over and reuse it on one side. And then you have to replace it, so you get two, two years out of it.
Yeah, you can get, depending on the winters, like I said, if you get good winters, and we've had some that...
So for the most part, they're not something we gotta, we're looking at by all, they're just, they last.
They last pretty good. You know, I, and that was the reason, another, another thing, looking at our equipment and everything, I need to, we're talking with Ben and Chris and everybody. We want to get those vans, and I want to set up an area for the vans that this, this slot is for van thirty-one. It's good for me for cleaning, snow clearing and stuff like that if I have...
Where do you think?
Right along this side of the garage.
I was gonna say, why don't you just use the side?
I am, we're gonna use that. I'm sorry if you, if that was Ben your spot for you.
You're part there anyway, but... Come out, might be totally...
Yeah, no, I just got a pusher on the, on the tool can, we can move it, but...
I only do like to move my, I can't walk enough away.
I know. I get it all the time.
I mean, I'm older than you.
So, and then had to, had to do some work on it, on the heater and that. The heaters and stuff in the gym, I'm glad we're capital projects, got that included. Because the mowers and different things, I'm trying to do a preventative maintenance thing on them and keep them, keep them greased and belts tightened properly and different things like that. So I try to stay on all the preventative maintenance stuff, so it works on it, but you still gotta, you still gotta work on stuff, so... And then the last thing I'm, I'm excited about is that tomorrow I get to go on the roof and get all these holes patched on the roof. I've been waiting for fifty-degree weather, and we're finally getting some. So I know, I know, a lot of people are like, I got a leak here, it's impales all over the place. I know where they are, I'm gonna get up there tomorrow, address that situation tomorrow and get, get everything so we're back and snubbed. I couldn't do that before, because they kept telling me, abort the warranty. But now with the capital project, I know exactly where we are with warranty, and there isn't any, it's, it's, it's all mine now up there. If I finally, I can, I can take care of it. And save, save some money on having Greenwood or somebody coming in. But other than that, everything else has been going good. It's just been busy and trying to stay, stay on top of everything and working with Chris and, and asking, asking for a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there.
What's that like?
Yeah, it's, I, I can't help it, I can't fix stuff without, without having, having what I need.
Does he talk? Huh? Does he talk with the money?
Oh, yeah, 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 I have to, I have to find out, I have to, I have to, I have to learn his lingo, his price points and different things like that.
He's learning stuff. Wow, that's a price point.
Because you guys don't bring...
Yeah, yeah, you know, so...
It's getting better.
Yeah, and now, now the joke is, is I, when I open the door up a little bit and say, hey dad, you need a little money here, come on. Can I borrow the car keys?
One or two cents.
That's all I...
You've been mowing it, that's what my daughter's best.
Well, I've never seen the departments working so well together. I'm not just saying that, it's true, there's been a lot of resistance from those two offices in the past.
Yeah, he's great at work.
Agreed.
He's tough.
But he's great. I enjoyed working with Steve. I don't know where I'm building would be without him.
Do what we came to.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So we have a discussion item on the agenda, dealing with BOSI's capital project.
Yep, thanks, Tim, I just wanted to put it on here, Dr. Parker had asked at our, at our last school, chief school officer meeting, you know, for all the area superintendents, if at our next board meeting, we could just give everybody update. I threw it on the, the discussion item, in my report, just in case you had any questions. You know, they did take you through, there's a number of slides, and I'm not gonna take you through all of them. I will refresh everybody's memory that because they're going through a different approach of the developer is actually bought the land and is building the facility. The restrictions and the timeframe are way different than ours. So it's actually moving very quickly. They've had zoning board approval, their architects have everything almost completely designed. Everything is, is on track. We've seen some schematics which they include there, and so some of their, their labs are gonna look for like cosmetology and the auto tech, you know, the HBAC lab that they're creating. Our students in the future are gonna have a part of this facility, and it's gonna be quite exceptional. The other piece that's not included here is the intention is that the existing facility that they have would also then become a transportation hub, which regionally could be a great advantage for those of us who have to bus kids to Albany and from various places. If we can meet at Ballard Road, and then they provide a transportation service, they take kids from Bolton, Fort Edward, whoever who are coming from the north, we get to Ballard Road, they take them the rest of the way. So, I mean, it just is, the possibilities here are exceptional for becoming more efficient. And how, because we're all sending three or four kids to the same locations and running our buses. When we could have a central transportation hub, which is the other part of this project which would come after it. I, I think that has some potential. It may not work for every scenario, but there are some common places we all send our out-of-district kids. And if we can have centralized transportation that's organized and efficient and is BOSI's equitable, then we've got, we've seen how transportation aid is just perfect way to flow through money. So a couple of things I did want to highlight, this, this project funding. It's a nonprofit organization, purchases the land, approximately two and a half year process, projected to move in July of 2027. A hundred percent of the cost of the lease is equitable. It's exempt from property taxes, state aid offsets any other cost at fifty-four point two five percent. The cost of the construction is built into a twenty-year lease, with no debt assumed by the districts. And at the end of the twenty-year lease, it will then be up to the component districts working with BOSI's to decide what we would like them to do. Do they want to re-lease it, or do they want to buy it? And at that point, then the component districts would vote like you would a normal capital project. That's twenty years down the road, and there'll be no existing debt at that point. So you're looking at really a very creative and a very efficient way to get a top-notch facility for our CTE students, our BOSI students, in a short period. to get a top notch facility for our CTE students, our Bosse students in a short period of time.
But that also means a lot more opportunities for more numbers of students to go to.
Yes, yes, their facilities are going to be larger, they're going to be more modern, they're going to, and their location, they're not going to have such fragmented use of facilities, they're going to consolidate a lot of their facilities and then sell off some of their existing buildings is the intent, for a much more efficient model in one location for everybody to have more opportunities because it's going to be more comfortable than you are. So it's, in the long run, for any component district in this Bosse's, it really is a great opportunity. And if you ever have any questions or anything about that, feel free to reach out to me and then, you know, I work, in touch a lot with Tony, who's been here many times and Dr. Parker and her team, they're happy to either come back or I can get answers for you right back at this table anytime you need. So fall of 27 is a pretty exciting opportunity in a short period of time for a brand new state of the art.
It'll be my new home.
Yeah, there you go.
So that's all you had on that? Great. All right, the next part of our meeting is when we put on some regular business things, there's a little blurb, I'll read it for the benefit of the public. This is all the consent agenda, all the board action is required. It's generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items, so the consent of all members, they're therefore grouped, and approval is given in a motion. In the event where number one wants to discuss any item, please go to appropriate consent agent. So can I get a motion to approve, this is section 8, A through D. Audra and Chris, any discussion? All in favor? Carry it. Okay, section nine, action items. We'll go through these one at a time, look at item A, cooperative bidding custodial products, copy paper and envelopes. I need a motion to approve participation in the cooperative purchasing program coordinated by Washington, Saratoga, Warren, Hamilton, Essex counties, Bosse's for bids awarded in the 25, 26 school year for custodial products, copy paper and envelopes. Can I get a motion? Ken and Tara, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Next up, fixed assets, can I get a motion to approve the auction, disposal and our auction of various items in accordance with policy 5250, sale and disposable of district property? The items listed are in the agenda, I get a motion for that approval? Audra and Sarah, any discussion? All in favor? Carry it. Item C, approve the 25, 26 school calendar, can I get a motion to approve the school calendar for next year? Ken and Tara, any discussion? Sorry, do you have a discussion?
I'm sorry, I thought, I wasn't paying attention. Sorry.
I heard in favor.
I heard the line, I heard the line while we were on, I just thought you said all in favor.
You got to honor the United States.
Is this what it is?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carry. Item D, we're tabling for a future date. Item E, secret resolution for 25, 26 capital outlet project, extremely long resolution. Chris, would you be able to give a quick summary of?
Yep, again, this is that piping infrastructure, so because of the old decrepit piping that we currently have in some areas of the school, this will allow us to use monies that we've invested in the budget to make sure we take care of that problem.
Can I get a motion to approve this secret resolution? Ken and Audra, any discussion? All in favor? Carry it.
Don't write your book down, we don't want to talk about it.
I was trying to speed it up.
That's acquired. Okay, letter F is a propositional resolution for transportation purchases. I'll go ahead and read it, it's not too long. I get a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education hereby accrues the following proposition to be placed before the voters at the May 2025 budget vote and election. Shall the Board of Education, the Quinella Union Free School District, be authorized to expand a maximum of 367,000 from the district's existing reserve fund known as the Transportation Reserve Fund for the purchase of one 28 passenger bus with a lift and three minivans, with all such vehicles to be used in the transportation program of the district and with the result that such expenditure from the Transportation Reserve Fund shall have no impact on the tax levy of the district for the 2025, 2026 school year. Can I get a motion of that? Tara and Chris?
Can we get, how much is that?
90%. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it.
I would also like to throw in there that we still have that mandate that we have to make sure that after July of 27, we no longer can buy any vehicle that's diesel. So that's still on the play. But right now, this is the way that we can also, I'll make sure our fleet is not really up to date, but we can actually navigate that mandate, there is no indication that that right now is off the table. This also allows us to, with our strategic looking ahead, this will allow us to make sure our entire fleet is optimal and can navigate that mandate.
Next part of the meeting is personnel. All appointments are subject to change and compensation corration pending emergency school closing and required reductions of force. All coaching appointments are made pending completion and verification of our required coaching credentials with a stipend per fee to contract commensurate with experience and no other salary benefits. All coaching and extraperticular appointments are subject to reduction in compensation corration pending final student enrollment numbers and pending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closing. I'd like to group these four together, we got three shoprooms and a cleaner. Everybody okay with grouping them? Can I get a motion to approve personnel items A through D? Tara and Chris, any discussion? All in favor? Carry it. Next up in the meeting, we have time for a second public comment period, if there are any. There's none?
No, thank you.
Okay, do we need an executive session for this evening? Any items? Okay, nobody else got on? All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Audra and Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Sort of word like, hey.
I ask a question. If we're tabling, can we set up a meeting or do you guys want me to just text you?
I want you guys to see what's available for you.
How long do you want?
What's that?
Do you want like a week?
Yeah, if we could, if we could go up a week.
Yeah.
That would be good. I'll make it. We have, we have time to go off. Sure.
No worries, just while you're all here, I wanted to ask before I had to send out text messages, that's all.
Couple days based on schedule. Reach out to you as well.